Order with roll call, please.
Kim York.
Here.
Paul Kaufman.
Here.
Billy King.
Here.
Bill Lowe.
Here.
Aaron Hallett.
Here.
Ashley Jones.
Here.
Ruth Johnson.
Here.
All right, is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Yes.
Okay, motion passed as unanimously. On to the long range facility planning update. Dr. Montes.
All right, we have three agenda items this evening that all kind of follow into that update category or progress report, and we're starting with the long range facility planning process. And as you know from our report, I believe it was back in November, that we've been working on this all fall. Dr. Petten Gill's been leading the committee work. Bill Lowe and Ruth Johnson are serving as board members on that committee, and we've got a pretty good group of staff members and technical experts, if you will, helping us with that planning process at this stage. We are getting close to the point where we're ready to go out and start getting some community feedback, and so what you're going to see tonight is kind of what I would call a pretty good draft, but still in progress draft of a community presentation that we want to start giving, beginning with our Citizens Advisory Committee in early February, and then rolling out to all the stakeholder groups that we can present to and get feedback from as we continue to work towards building a plan moving forward. So with that, as a kind of a backdrop, I'm going to have Brian kind of walk through this, and we won't necessarily cover every bullet point on the presentation, but just wanted you to see the big picture and see the added detail that we put with what we shared with you in November. So with that, Brian will walk you through.
Very good. As we go out to the community and talk to our stakeholders to gather feedback, just wanted to give them an overview of where this work came from. So we did feel it was important to list our committee members, and everyone gave us a nod that it was okay to list their names on our presentation. Current facilities by grade span, we'll add in our Raypack Academy there, but just a reminder for our stakeholders, sometimes we take it for granted that everyone understands exactly what our current situation is and the different transitions, so felt that was important to include that.
Do we need to add the Success Academy?
Well, we've, it's a little bit tricky.
Oh, okay.
Yes.
That's in discussion, though.
It's probably more a program than it is an actual building site, so it is something that, yeah, we've talked about.
One thing I might mention on this slide over on the right-hand side, at the bottom of each grade span area, it talks about grade level capacity. So it kind of gives you a sense, when you look at the high school, the max is 570 per grade level, and then the effective capacity is 510. Well, when you compare that, the middle school level, we're 635 to 705. At the elementary level, collectively across all the buildings, we're 560 to 625. So people might ask you, where is our pinch point? That tells us that the high school is the place where we have the least amount of capacity per grade level.
There's a lot of information on this slide. We're in discussions on if we want to break it apart, only include some of this, but it is, there's a lot of valuable data there for those that wanted to dive into it. Highlighted in the red squares shows you what we are basing our numbers off of. That's our more peculiar guidelines for class size, which our guidelines are a lot stricter than what the state would recommend, per se. So utilizing those, that's where we get our effective and maximum capacity numbers, but this slide does include, for those that are interested, what our capacity looks like if we were looking at the DESI recommendations. The big takeaway from this slide, as we look at the big picture, the 1920 school years, the last one in the darker colors before you get into the pastels, showing our growth according to RSP's trend data that they put together, and showing the big pictures, we're looking at 800 students over the next 10 years is what they are predicting our growth, or 80 students per year at the K-12 level. From there, we break it in, we start looking at the different levels. High school, obviously, as we pointed out earlier, is our biggest pinch point, most immediate need. A little bit, we talk a little bit, there's numbers maybe skewed just a little bit because they include students that are attending Raypack Academy, or spending half their day at Cass Career, or Summit Tech, or the Southland Caps. So we've really, the committee has put together and researched all the different options and came up with three viable options for us. During the presentation, we'll break down each one, go into the advantages and disadvantages of each of those, and look at what our possibilities are, potentially a combination of some of these. Again, the perceived advantages and potential disadvantages, the majority of those came from our committee going through activities to determine what the perceived advantages could be and what are some potential disadvantages. So tonight, on each of these slides and every scenario for each level, we have those listed out, but you do have that for your reference. Freshman Center, same idea. One of the big things, freshman center or a small comprehensible comprehensive high school, if we were to do a second one, no matter what it is, it is phase one of our second high school, so we have to think of it in those terms. We're not going to build two full-size high schools right away, or two, another building the same size as what we have. Again, the advantages and disadvantages of either doing the freshman center route or the comprehensive high school route, and then also in Lou, or we could do a capstone facility, or we could do it in combination with one of those. Middle school projections, this is kind of a way to show that, projections show that we should be okay capacity-wise at our 68 level. Now, we do have to consider some balancing in there over the next 10 years. A lot of our growth is in the north and northeast areas of the district. At the elementary level, again, it's not, when you look at all seven buildings together, we're not in dire straits, and RSP did not project that we would become, but when we, that's why it's important, we have to start looking at each of the individual boundaries. So this chart kind of shows you, it's a little bit confusing, the first bar shows you our current enrollment in this past fall. The green bar, the blue bar then shows you the effective capacity from in-site design, our on-demand architects that put together some numbers there for us, and then went ahead and did a five-years-out in 2024, what is the projected enrollment there. So clearly, you can see Timber Creek is a pinch point there, and again, in that north, northeast side of the district, there's a lot of growth.
Back up there, the other two buildings that will be getting close to capacity within that five-year period are Creekmore and Eagle Glen, they'll be right there, close to it. So again, that northern tier of the district is where the more rapid growth is being seen, and that's a five-year estimate. Take it out 10 years, it would be even more than that for those schools.
So really looking at two different options for our elementary solutions, we could revise our attendance boundaries to balance enrollments in our current, by utilizing our current facilities, or we could, looking ahead, build an eighth elementary. We do have land on Prater Lane that's up near the water tower north, toward our northern boundary that is in the area of growth, so that is an option that we'll explore. Again, going through the advantages and disadvantages of each of those options, we'll be there, we'll actually go through the bullet points when we're doing community presentations.
So you might back up there just a second. With this, and people might ask, well, what does that look like? Are you, meaning you're just going to move Timber Creek students out? Well, the reality is, if you had to go through a full boundary process and try to have it set up for a five, or eight, or 10-year span, it's going to cause you to look at probably all your boundaries again, because just moving Timber Creek kids out might buy you a couple years, but it may not buy you five or seven, and you don't want to do it again in two years. So you may have to take kids from the northern schools and move them to the central schools, and kids from the central schools and move them to the southern schools in order to create enough space across all the schools in that scenario. So it's, how you do it could vary based on how long you expect it to last before you have to do something else.
If we build a new K-5, approximately, how long does that take?
If, it would be at least a full year of construction, but probably you'd want to build in a two-year timeframe, so.
So there's possibility we'd have to re-boundary anyway while this school was going up?
There's, that's the trick, is if, in fact, we think in our first phase, we want to have that elementary school in there, I think we would make every effort not to re-boundary during that timeframe.
You'd really only want to re-boundary once.
Yeah, if you, if, you know, we're anticipating a phased approach here, and we're going to talk about that again here in a little bit, and I would think that if you're going to do a two-phase process, or if you're going to do that elementary sooner, you'd probably do everything you can just to do it once, as Al said.
You don't want students going to this school, and then this school, and then re-boundary when you build a new school, and then they go to three elementary schools.
Yeah, we won't do that.
The scenario could literally be, a kid comes out of Timber Creek to another school, because in short term, that's where the pinch is, and then the new school gets built, and they go into the new school, and so literally, that scenario could happen. And obviously, we don't want to do that, that's, comes down to how fast we think it's coming and what our options are.
Good question. Again, there's advantages and disadvantages of each of those. As we're looking at different scenarios, we also want to take a second to look at our ancillary facility needs, different things, and we put everything on there that was brought up, so it doesn't mean that we're necessarily advocating for any specific area, but an aquatic center came up because, I mean, honestly, because our neighbors got a nice, beautiful eight lane with diving and everything, so that's always, you know, you want to look at your peers when you're looking at facilities.
Which actually helped us, because now we go to High Blue instead of Harrisonville.
Athletic performance field is kind of open-ended in terms of, we have a pinch point with many different levels that we are, that we have at a school our size, and making sure people and groups have a place to practice and, you know, and do their events. Performing Arts Center, if anybody's seen, been to one of our, you know, when you have a program like we have with our choir and band and at all levels, and theater, obviously, our 1992 facility is, we've outgrown it a little bit, so that Performing Arts Center is obviously a need that's been talked about quite a bit. And then tennis courts, our tennis team gets shuttled to community courts and gets split up, so at a classic school, that's an area that we'd like to look at as well.
As far as cost on those, which one?
I'll get there.
Okay.
Coming up.
Yeah, we, it's now as good time as any to bring that up. We thought about, should we go ahead and put cost figures on these initial slides, or do the financial piece at the end? Right now, our thinking is, we'll do the financial piece at the end, because we want people to think about it, just based on pros and cons and options and objectives, and then add the financial piece to it, otherwise, we're worried people get hung on the money before they think about the rest of the characteristics.
I was just looking like maybe a one through four, I could kind of guess that probably the tennis courts would be the easiest and the less expensive.
You're probably right.
Aquatic. You could be right.
Relatively, relatively speaking, they're less expensive, yes. Obviously, with the aquatic center and the performing arts center, there's all of, a lot of similar advantages and disadvantages with the different areas.
You know, on the aquatic center, and Dr. Montes mentioned that there is a facility available with High Blue Wellness, but it's not a one-to-one. They don't get as much practice time. At one point, the girls were getting up at 4:30 a.m. to go practice, because the team's so big, they had to split between morning and afternoon. So I think it, you might try to build that in, because I don't want people to get the impression that we get all the use that we could possibly need by having High Blue Wellness there.
And Kim, you brought up a question, the last time we talked about this, of what do the other schools have, and we are working on compiling all that information, we're getting close to having those comparisons, and collectively, unlike the aquatic center, it's about half and half. Half either have their own facility within the district, or they access a community facility that's somewhere nearby, so that's kind of what that looks like. And tennis courts, it's kind of the same way, some access, local parks and rec-type courts, probably more have them on campus. The biggest, I would say, glaring gap in the comparisons we've seen so far is the size of the theater. That's one where ours is probably half the size or less of many of the theaters for districts our size.
And as we go through these presentations, we'll, you know, obviously, list out the advantages and disadvantages of each of the options.
And will we be specific about what fields we're talking about?
We'd.
And what does that mean, fields?
Okay, so that's one of those, I think we're going to have, we're going to have to keep it very general, because it could be a small practice field all the way up to a large, you know, competition field with extra seating and what have you. So the answer is, it's a range, and then the range is probably pretty significant. So what we're trying to do at the end, when we get the input, is for them to give us some idea of where they think importance overall is.
But I think people would have a different answer if you said we needed another football field than if you said we need another soccer field, or we need another. I think we would get a different input depending on their assessment of our relative status given that sport.
Okay. We can take that back to the committee and see how we want to parse that out.
I mean, don't you think, I mean, people would have different opinions?
I think the idea was, you have a general sense of what it is we're looking at, and when you look at the monetary part of it, whatever is going to be fed out to that, you create that plan as far as what you're going to do with it. So it'd be hard to, like Dr. Montes said, it'd be hard to say, okay, we have this amount of dollars we can use, but what, what parcel of field are we going to do? What is it we are going to plan to do with that at this point, even though we're in the stages of it?
Because you're kind of gaining the feedback of asking, do you want a swimming pool, or do you want more practice facilities? Or do you want a new theater, or do you want?
We need to come up at least with an average cost of what a field, we need something financial probably to add to that, I think.
But as people are giving their input, I think people have a, we're going to help them understand the sense for the need, right? So we might say, our Performing Arts Center can only accommodate X number of people, and we have to have three sessions because we have three times that. But this doesn't give people any sense for what our need is. Like, if you put up there that we only have one soccer field and it takes three, I don't know, and we have three times the need than the one field, I would have a different response to it than if you say, we have three practice fields for this other sport, and we want to add a four. You see what I'm saying?
We could look, we have extensive use at our facility, so I think we could look at use numbers, percentage of use. You see in the evening, especially when you live as close as I do, regarding use of the facility, that it starts from right after and goes till very late sometimes.
I can see the value of that.
Yeah, I mean, we have to assess, okay, which has the greater need?
Right.
Or the most lack, the biggest gap?
Yeah.
And those are the examples we could use then, to say, you know, the highest need would be this, or this, and this is approximately what they would cost. We could do that, I think.
Good. We talked a little bit to the Performing Arts Center needs.
Yeah, and impact, so like, I'm sorry, just, so like, the previous slide might impact 100, I'm making numbers up, might impact 500, and this only impacts 100, or one impacts 2,000 kids, and one impacts 100 kids. I mean, what is the impact that we would see by expanding one or the other?
Take that back to the group. Talked a little bit about tennis courts already. Then we'll get into the financial considerations, and you have to look at your bonding capacity as well as your ability to pay. You're allowed to borrow up to 15% of your assessed value, but then you also have to look at what your levy will support in paying back, and the plan throughout this has been to do this, these improvements without increasing the levy.
Yeah, that's been our general mindset. If the board says, okay, we ought to think about doing something, whatever we think we need within our bonding capacity, even if it causes to raise our levy, we might take a different angle, but I guess our baseline assumption is, given our bonding capacity and what we have available to us, the fact that we can do our full bonding capacity, at least in the short term, without raising our levy, we've kind of kept that mindset of a no tax rate increase plan, at least in the near term. If you guys think of some, if you want to be more aggressive with it, in the future years, that'll be an option.
So then, you've seen this chart before, a version of it, looking at the difference, a couple of different scenarios. The mindset's always been to go at this as a phased process, so in phase one, you know, running on, if we were to look at, putting something on the ballot in April of 2021, you would have two different options. One's more front-loaded, while the other one's more of a balanced approach, if you will. You could look at a 50/50 and 50, or 50/55, then the 30 to 45. Or if you front-load it at 70, you could come back five years later, and these are somewhat conservative projections, but realistic numbers, you could come back and get 40, but then, and I had asked, and we talked about before, why the numbers were 105 and 110 by front-loading, but then we, Dr. Montes looked into it a little more with bias, and said, well, with the more balanced approach, you could come back a third time quicker without raising taxes or, and staying within your bonding capacity.
And, well, it'll be important to qualify, all the numbers you're going to see, starting with this slide moving forward, are filled with estimates, lots of estimates. In terms of overall assessed value growth, we're being fairly conservative at 2%, because we've been seeing, and we just had a 10% or 12% reassessment year, even in a year of no reassessment, we're getting 3% to 4% new construction growth, so we've had some pretty healthy growth there. It's not given that that continues, but the 2% assumption we've got is pretty conservative overall, especially if in the next reassessment cycle, it's another 8% to 10%. Those early years being above average really builds a lot of capacity quickly, if you will, and it helps your assumptions moving forward. But to Brian's point, you know, we, these numbers are fairly arbitrary to pick 50 million or 70 million, but they're highlighting just the fact that we do have significant bonding capacity compared to what we had in 2016, or if you even go clear back to 2008 for the East Middle School bond issue, we didn't have anywhere near this bonding capacity or debt service levy capacity to finance this kind of, this kind of facility need, and once you see the price tag of some of the things we're looking at, you realize pretty quickly it's going to be necessary.
And just to clarify, on this slide, so there's our capacity, but that is different than what we can afford to pay, isn't it? Those are two separate calculations.
Correct. Back up that slide. So you have your.
Right, but how does that affect the next slide?
Okay, so.
Like, do we have a slide that shows what we can afford to pay?
That's what this slide is kind of showing, it's kind of combining both things. So the bonding capacity is over on your left-hand column. So for example, 2021, the 71 million is the bonding capacity available in that time, and if you borrow 50 million of that 71, you drop 50 million off that, but then add the growth for the next year, that's why it goes from 71 to 28. That's, that's the impact of the bonding capacity.
Because it's factoring in your payments?
It factors in your payments, and it factors in a 2% growth in your assessed value, versus if you do the full amount, if you look at a 71 million, you could do 70 million, but then you lower your available capacity to 8 million, and that's why, when you do more upfront, your levy then becomes part of your threshold in future years as to what you can finance without having to increase your tax rate.
So all of that is without increasing tax?
All these assumptions here are without increasing the tax rate and assuming a 2% growth in values.
What would the impact of a levy increase look like? And what would scenario one and two look like if we were to venture that way?
Well, I want to kind of back up with that. In the, in the scenario one and two here, we are, what it shows is that we can essentially do our bonding capacity both times without increasing our levy. It's what happens after that that becomes problematic. So it's really the scenario phase three, based on these assumptions, that become the problem. So in scenario one, when you get, you know, out 10 years, and again, our margin of error gets pretty big at 10 years out, but we are limited to where at that point in time, we can again do our full bonding capacity. Our bonding capacity in scenario two at that point is 61 million. What I would tell you is, we can't do 60 million without increasing our levy at that point in scenario two. We have to do a little, get some help with them from our financial advisors on what it would have to go up to get to that number. But we are, this is, this is a remarkably flexible situation in that, at least for the next five or six years, we can do our full bonding capacity potentially twice without increasing our levy.
And that's money, though, just to pay for the facility?
Correct.
And so this doesn't take into account if we would have to have a levy increase to accommodate additional costs like payroll for a second building?
Right, so that would be my advice, if we were thinking about something that would be an increase in the levy, it'd be on the operational side and keep this the same. And reminder, this takes a supermajority to approve a general bond issue, whereas the operating levy does not. So that's, I think if we're, if we're thinking about, we need additional resources to help with the implementation of any facilities, it should be on the operating side, and that's where the levy might need to be adjusted.
I think it's a nice way to say, so you heard that 2026, that's where, after that, you're talking about increasing that levy, where you go down to 2032 in scenario one, there's a possibility coming back and saying, we want, we're able to maybe have $45 million of additional funds available without increasing that levy, and I think that gives a better picture of.
Right.
What, what you're doing to try and balance that levy.
And that, that opportunity would come eventually in scenario two, but it might be three, or four, or five years beyond what it does in scenario one.
Scenario one, with the 50 million, we wouldn't try to do both elementary and the new school, the high school, or whatever, with that, we would do one or the other.
Well, it, more than likely, depending on which choice you make, but yeah, if you're talking the freshman center or a smaller comprehensive high school, either one of those would probably preclude you from doing. Now, again, we've done two scenarios, you can pick a number anywhere in between that you wanted as well, and that, so we're just using these as examples to give you some kind of parameters on either side.
I mean, we're just having to try to balance out, I mean, we need both of these facilities.
But a couple of slides, it'll give us the price tag, so you can.
I'll wait, and we'll just watch that.
And then just one more, just a quick, because we're talking about the operating side in later years, but if we do something in 2021 that involves one or two buildings, don't we have to worry about the operational side then?
We would, it would not be, need to be included in the facility plan, so.
No, I understand that.
Right, but you're right, as.
So we're not looking at waiting 10 years to potentially need something on the operational side.
Not necessarily.
The minute we do 50 million or 70 million, we have an operational increase in operational costs, right?
More than likely, yeah. Well, you would, yes. The question is, is it significant enough that your other new revenues could help you absorb that, or are you definitely going to have to go ask for more to support it? And there have been just as many bond issues that have not come with an operating increase for new schools as there have been bond issues that have asked for an increase.
And so wouldn't we need to have some estimates on that as we're seeking feedback from the public?
We are working on that, but I, the question is philosophically, do you think that should be primary? It, I will tell you the difference between, say, the freshman center approach that we're going to share with you in the comprehensive high school, there are some operational cost differences, but they're not significant. I wouldn't let that drive my decision-making between those two choices, is my, my thought on that. I think the instructional side of what we want to do and the long-term financial picture overall is probably a heavier weight, in my mind, of how I would look at it than the difference between operating a building for 700 freshmen versus 800, 912 kids, or something like that. So I, I appreciate the.
We just don't want the public to be, feel like we didn't share everything we needed to share, if a year later, we have to come back and ask for something that we didn't tell them.
We, we would certainly include, both in our talking points in this presentation and in our facility plan document, the fact that that may be a possibility. I don't know that we want to get into the minutia of what that looks like with too great a detail, because there are so many choices that we make as we go through that.
Yeah, on the flip side, if we think there wouldn't be much impact, that given our projections that it would be covered, I mean, there's both sides to that.
That's the thing, if we had, I guess I'd hate to pass something for a new building and everything, and then come back, and what happens if your levy increase doesn't pass?
Right.
And then you're sitting there going, how are we going to operate this thing?
And then they're saying, you didn't tell us that.
Right.
Right, yeah.
Well, I think there's a chance, if I were to say today, you know, we took our feedback, and we decided to go with option whatever that we choose, there's a chance that if you said either it will certainly require an increase, or it won't require an increase, there's a chance you'd be wrong regardless. I think we need to be honest that it could require an increase. There are so many moving parts to that equation, because again, the funds that pay for the building in a capital projects bond issue situation are totally separate from the operating side, and so all the moving parts in the operating budget are happening independent of this, and the other part of it is, we open a new facility, we're going to be moving kids into that new facility, we're going to be moving a lot of staff members with it. So then the question is, what are those unique positions that you have to have in every building, and we're working on that, that estimate now, estimate now, but again, if you're talking about the two, two or three of the high school options, I don't know that it'll be significantly enough different that you would let that decide which type of facility approach or organizational approach you want to take.
But you said you're working on the estimates, right?
We are. I'm just, I'm just trying to figure out what is the right balance of what to include here. I think we need to acknowledge there are operational costs, and we've talked about that with some of the pros and cons of those choices and the advantages, disadvantages.
Well, deciding what to include might come after we see what the numbers are, see what the estimates are, right? I mean, if we, if your estimates show that one scenario has zero impact and another make up a really crazy high number, you know, has a really high impact, I think we would want to know that before we started talking and making presentations. So we'll have those estimates.
Well, what I'm saying is, based on my experience in doing projects like this over a period of time, again, as we look at the two more expensive high school options, it's, there's a difference, but it's not, I'm telling you, it's not going to be significant. It's not going to be a dramatic difference in terms of overall operational side.
Between any of the options?
Well, between those two more expensive high school options, the Career Center's much smaller, Capstone Career Center's a much smaller program, if will. They're expensive programs that you would have in there, but collectively overall, you're not talking about anywhere near the number.
It's not going to be an operational cost of a full-blown high school.
Correct.
Not even close.
Right. Right. That's the biggest difference there, much smaller. So we'll think some more about how we want to qualify that or quantify that.
And it might be two steps. I mean, I understand, I think it's important to understand what the community thinks we need, and cost might be the second question. But I think we need to have something prepared to know what that is.
So, and part of that comes down to, with our approach, do we think it's more important to think about facility and programming needs? And if so, we address the cost needs as we work towards implementation. Now, I agree, you need to know some of that before you put it on the ballot, because that's the decision.
Right. I mean, someone comes up and says, we have to get a $2 increase, we, you know, I'm making up something crazy ridiculously high. We need to know that before we proceed, is all I'm saying.
Right.
Yeah, okay.
I mean, operational costs and maintenance costs of, you know, a performing arts center versus what's maintenance cost of a tennis court? I mean, just operational costs, maintenance costs, you know, a pool, what's a pool going to cost, you know, long-term?
Right.
I mean, between each of this different things, you know, kind of need to know, again, it's not going to be that dramatic operational cost on those, but...
So looking at some estimates, well, this is just phrasing our...
Summary of that last one.
The summary of the last page there, the difference between the balanced approach and the front-loaded approach. But looking at the different, and these are, these are estimates, and there's such a wide range, because it depends, obviously, a Capstone Career Center depends on what programming you decide to put in there. With the freshman center, you know, and these numbers don't include the performing arts center, because when the calculations were done there, that was pulled out separately as an area. So the freshman center and comprehensive high school, some different numbers that Insight put together, just...
So we'll add the performing arts center or...
Performing arts center would be...
We've got that in a separate grouping.
And I think the performing arts center number that you're going to see in a minute would be, once it's connected to one of these other facilities, that price may fluctuate as well. And you have options there.
Looking at the...
Again, we're going to qualify that as, these are estimates. These are using some, just some general square footage and market trend information on costs. Again, the design phase will end up impacting what you include, what you don't include, really impacts the overall cost of the projects as you move forward.
So as we look at our elementary considerations, I mean, obviously, there isn't any significant cost with utilizing our current facilities and, you know, there's some emotional costs there, but just looking at redoing our boundaries, building an eighth elementary comparable in size to our existing elementaries, does come with a price tag and would also include reconfiguring our boundaries. Looking at the ancillary facility cost considerations, we based Aquatic Center, or I should say, Aaron Hardy based the Aquatic Center number kind of off of Belton, what they built, you know, and we can, we do, like, when we have that next door, we know what those operating costs are. So to answer Kim's question, we could get some pretty close estimates there for what they're investing in operation. The athletic performance fields, that obviously, as we talked about earlier, could vary greatly depending on what we went, what we decided to build.
We'll put, we'll put a number to some, at least an example or two.
Are you talking turf or grass or...?
Probably not talking turf with just adding a supporting field. Now, if we do the, with the high school building, it assumes, regardless of which of those two, it assumes some field development. So this is really just thinking about it collectively as, do we need more fields as we sit today? So when you, again, go into developing one of the other high school options, depending, there are some assumed costs for field development in those estimates, more for the comprehensive high school than it is with the freshman center approach. But this is just looking at it from just going out and building a field for the sake of having another field. I probably wouldn't, in that scenario, be doing it as a turf field. But again, it's something we could discuss.
One of the things we always want to bring everyone back to is what the priorities were determined, and these priorities have went through the committee, and then they went to, they came through the board, and they went through citizen advisory, and then back to the committee. So several levels to develop these, obviously, you know, making sure our spaces that we build are for modern learning. And a lot of these, as you'll notice, are in conflict with each other. I mean, we want, we'd like to have neighborhood schools, we want equity, the financial impact may be in conflict with limiting transitions and back and forth. So you're going to have to kind of weigh things, but just keeping in the background, obviously, when you go through a presentation like this, I imagine everyone here has already started putting the puzzles together to see how you get to 70 million. When we talk about equity between schools here, we'll have to take in some consideration to leave some money back for that deferred maintenance piece. And that'll be a talking point throughout the presentation on, we want to make sure that we don't invest all our money in building a brand-new gorgeous elementary up here and not addressing needs at our older facilities, at Peculiar and Rainmore Elementaries, for example, that, that need some assistance facility-wise, too. So we've got to kind of roll all that together, and so this is quite a process, and there's a lot of moving pieces. So, and then obviously, coming back together, having some collaborative conversations at the tables, and then, once those conversations occur, then we have a survey that all of the...
Attendees, yeah.
Attendees will take to give us some feedback, and they'll sort them and rank them and let us know what their priorities are, and there's also open-ended opportunities for them there.
So I want to kind of make sure we're clear here. What we're doing here is not asking them to vote on what we want to put on the ballot, per se. We're asking them to give us their input on what they think our priorities should be. In other words, what the high school space needs, after we've described what the three options are, tell us which one would be your first choice, second choice, third choice. We'll have that collective information. We'll balance that with what they tell us about the elementary options and/or what, how they would rank those ancillary facilities in terms of priority. So it could be with the, just use an example, with the four ancillary facility options there, it could be that two are way higher in terms of priority than the other two. And in that scenario, maybe then the final plan includes one of them in phase one and one of them in phase two, and the other two aren't even in there. It could be that they're all four equally valued the same, and we figure out how to work them in collectively between phase one and phase two. So we're not necessarily, the board in the end is still going to have some big decisions to make with this input information. We're just trying to get a sense of what people feel would be the smartest approach, because eventually, they're going to probably be asked to support something related to that. So I just want you to know that this is, this input process is an input process, and then the committee and the board collectively will have to work on, okay, based on this feedback, how does this fit into a phasing plan over the next 10 years? And then, as Brian was mentioning, the, at the end of this, there's, there would be a quick survey that they would be, they could either link it with their QR code on their phone, or they could do it online. We would have hard copies, depending on where we're presenting and what we're presenting, and we'll compile all that information over the next. The plan now, I guess, is, starting with that citizen advisory meeting in early February, go out to all of our stakeholder groups that we've gone to in the past for our planning purposes. And so we'll probably start with staff presentations to kind of get them involved early, because they're going to get a lot of questions as we go out to other groups, and we want them to kind of know what's being at least discussed at this point. And hopefully, at the end of it, we get some pretty clear thoughts on what the community would like to see us do. We were fortunate, the last time we went through this process, it was very clear what they wanted us to do, so it made it really easy to take the next step. This one will probably be a little more complex in the fact that, you know, we're likely looking at a two-tier, phase one, phase two process, and, and that's not, that's fairly normal for school districts as you go through this process, especially if you're talking about building a high school-type facility because of their size and their scope. I know Belton had probably a 20-year timeline to get from their freshman center start to a brand-new high, a full, complete comprehensive high school. That was multiple phases over multiple years. I don't think we're quite looking at that, but it's certainly probably a two- or three-phase process. Any other questions we could answer at this time? I think my takeaways are, we, especially when it comes to the ancillary information, we want to talk about, get more detail on what the athletic fields might entail in terms of cost parameters, and then more information about operational costs and potential impact there.
Yeah, and what sports? I mean, you know, aquatic center, that's easy. It's for the swim team.
Right.
Tennis courts is for the tennis team. Performing arts is for the performing arts kids, so, but what's the athletic field?
Well, what I would tell you about that in general terms is, other than baseball, softball, almost all the other fields can be used for multiple sports. So I, I'm not sure we'll be able to say it's just for soccer or if it's just for this, because right now, our, the stadium field is being used by all kinds of sports and marching band on Thursday nights and, you know, the whole gamut. Baseball, softball are a little more specialized, but even they use, they have a shared field they use for their JV field, so...
So what's the need? I mean, there has to be a need that we're asking to fulfill, isn't it?
I think you had a good point with just overall use. I think if we list the, the, these facilities, these sports programs, these activities, not just sports programs, use these fields and their capacity is, and make some estimate, or at least list what they are currently used for.
And I'm, I don't have an opinion one way or the other, because I don't know the data.
Right.
But on the tennis courts, we know we have zero.
Correct.
Well, we could add tennis to the PE program.
And we know on Aquatic Center, we have zero. And we know on Performing Arts, we have one that holds 20% capacity. But I don't know, right now, if you asked me, I'd say no on athletic fields, because it's, no one's told me that there's a kid, there's no one told me there's kids that can't practice.
I know.
If you see a Thursday night, you've got the football team out there getting ready for the football game. You also have the band that wants to get out there and get their marks and get everything set for the football game and for performing.
And then you have soccer.
And you've got soccer and everything.
That wants it as well.
So if you had, say, two or three other football slash soccer fields that are locked up and everything.
General purpose, even.
General purpose. Then, you know, football can go out and get ready on Thursday nights, and the band can get set up and get their marks, because it's lined and everything, and it's just, it's multiple...
Right. We're currently practicing on a parking lot for band often. I mean, there are really opportunities that I think we could explain.
They try to get their marks and everything in a parking lot, and it's just not fair.
When we're trying to park cars for a cross-country meet, it's very interesting. So I really do think we could explain the purpose.
And so what he was saying, that's just what we need to say, because otherwise, how do I know?
I'm with you.
Why do we need it?
Right.
And then once I heard him, I'm like, oh.
Well, that makes sense.
I think that was brought up for, like, soccer need because of the, how many students are participating as freshmen and sophomores, and then compound that with football usage and how are they getting to be able to use the field? So that, that was one of the specific ones we spoke about with the band, and so...
Yep.
And that's an area that we're...
...our activities, you know.
That's an area we're trying to address within our regular capital projects funding, but somehow, I mean, there's always surprises that come up and, you know, fire ponds that get silted in and things that are expensive that you weren't counting on.
Any other thoughts to take back to the committee as we kind of keep moving forward? The other comment I will share with you, even though, you know, I know we're getting really full at Timber Creek, for example, we are not in a position where we have to be in a great big hurry. We've got a planning process. We go out, take, get our feedback. We'll look at that feedback. Committee will, you know, hopefully come up with some pretty solid recommendations to bring back to the board. But at any point, if we decide, you know, we're not quite ready to approve a plan, we can go back and revisit it. We've got more time. The earliest I would anticipate, and again, I won't be here in this role, but the earliest I would anticipate, the community's going to be making a decision, big, long-term about this, would be April of '21 realistically. So, you know, we're 15 months away from having that, which means we've probably got a year from now before we're really having to make that decision if we were ready to pull the trigger. So that's kind of the overall timeframe that we would have, and it'd be difficult to speed it up from there realistically, anyway, so. All right?
Okay. Moving on to the machining program update.
All right. Well, good evening, everyone. I will try and be as somber as these two gentlemen, but I just don't think it's possible, so I'll do my best along those lines. So looking at our machining program update, about a couple of months ago, we came to you regarding a partnership, a draft partnership, to build a partnership with MCC to address machining. Looking at our description here, we've really begun to design this program for seniors and give them the opportunity to gain certification in both milling and lathe operation. So you'll see what I put for you here are the course titles, the outlines, it would be essentially a two-se semester, half-day program that would be housed here on our campus. It would be taught virtually by a teacher from Metropolitan Community College while at the same time having one of our instructors here onsite, working in that virtual environment. So our kids will be working on the machines that they're actually using on campus at MCC with our teacher, while the instructor is instructing over camera and then showing and critiquing. So it will be a very live environment in that situation. So we're really excited about offering that. I do have to say, this absolutely still is a work in progress. We've gone ahead and put it in the course guide, we're discussing it right now as a possibility, the course guide has not gone out yet, as a possibility. If in turn it doesn't, we do not have the program up and running, it can be started at a later date. So I just don't want to give the impression that we're at an all-or-nothing situation, but we are proceeding forward with this as a possibility for our students for next year. So looking on this list, looking at the courses, in the end, our students would receive 20 dual-credit hours in these opportunities. So this would be dual-credit opportunities for our students. As a pilot, we would like to offer that that dual-credit is picked up by the district. So we're talking about a small group of students, most likely coming out of our materials and processing two, or home maintenance two, that are seniors, that would be interested in entering a half-day dual-credit program in milling and lathing. So that would be at no cost to them. Approximately, that would be about $2,000 worth of dual-credit opportunity for them, and coming out of this program with a milling and a lathing certificate. The exciting thing about this is that it also comes with a paid internship opportunity at the end of that senior year, that works in the $14 to $15 range in the paid internship that is already set up and structured by MCC. So they have to make adequate progress in the program. I mean, they obviously have to be doing well and working towards it, but that internship is a part, embedded part of this program. We really are wanting this to be something that our students will see as an opportunity for real hands-on, practical learning that leads to career opportunity, or it leads to a continuation. So looking at this, at 20 hours, you're about of a third away towards computer-integrated machining and manufacturing associate's degree. You'd have to go back and take some of those college, you know, your history class and your English class, but you'd have a lot of the actual practical, hands-on work done so as our students finish this program. They, some students choose to go on, and so I was talking with the instructor at MCC, some students choose to go on, and some just go right into the workforce.
If they've done their work and they've shown that they can do this work, they will have job opportunities immediately.
Yeah.
Without any further certificates, more than likely.
Yeah, they can choose to go on, they're, choose the job opportunities. So I just want to go over a couple of the kind of key ideas. So, I just want to go over a couple of the kind of key ideas, like location. So, we're looking right now at the academy shop area. It would be a shared space with robotics. I have spoken with them, I'm going to go tour it with them next week just to look at space. We would have to, there's a couple areas we would have to expand, not expand the building. We'd have to use some additional space that's already there. Definitely do some rehab with that area to make it fit, to make it work. Equipment needs, there are some fairly extensive supplies and equipments that's needed. That list is under development. Some, we're looking for multiple ways to access that, if we can get some shared equipment through MCC. As you see on the description, you'll see a SIM 160 will include travel to MCC. Some of the larger equipment in milling and lathing, we're talking about is a significant cost, so $100,000 a machine. A lot of that can be done in that advanced course where we could then take our students to campus, just for that one component of that class.
Would this be at Longview, or would this be done off of Front Street?
Right now, it'd be off of Front Street. Yeah.
That's where they're...
They're looking at, they're looking at building and moving. But for now, if we began this next year, they haven't started construction on anything with MCC that might be, or they wouldn't be in a different location. But yeah, correct, that would be off Front Street. So, looking at that, the list of equipment's pretty extensive. We are putting that together, looking at what we can do with that. It is important to note that the majority of that is vocational enhancement grant-eligible, which is often a 75-25 match. So, the grant will cover 75% of that, and we, as a district, would have to match the other 25.
75% of what?
Whatever equipment that is needed for the program. So, we're talking about...
If the grant was approved.
Yeah, if the grant is approved. And I really believe, we've been talking with Desi, this is, this is absolutely college and career-ready, this is vocational education at its best, so...
It's a high-need field, high-need area.
So, we believe it will look, be looked upon very highly.
How many students do you anticipate in this, and are you going to cap it at a certain amount?
Yeah, starting small for sure. I mean, I think absolutely as we start this, we're talking about possibly just 10 to 12 students. I mean, it would be a small program to start, and then we look for a growth and expansion based on need and space.
And MCC's charging how much an hour?
Oh, it's like 95.
95.
Yeah, yeah. So, that's where the $2,000 per student an estimate, 20 hours at about 95. So, if we took 10 students, the maximum, we're talking about on the tuition cost for our district would be $20,000.
And related to that, too, as we finalize our equipment list, and we, as we go through the process of applying for vocational enhancement grants and figuring out how much gets funded and how much doesn't get funded, it's possible that out of all these courses, there's one of those advanced courses we can't really offer.
Yeah.
Because we don't have the, the resources to be able to do it. But all the others would still be available to us potentially, and it would still be a full value, it would still be a valuable program. So, that's why there's a little bit of flex, if you will, on this because of all the different moving pieces. This is one of those situations where if we wanted to wait till we had all the answers, we'd wait a whole nother year. But I think at this point, we're continuing to do our homework.
Or more.
We think there's a good opportunity. The, the partnership potential of the MCC makes it worthwhile to go ahead and just keep pushing forward, which is what we're doing. So, and we want to, Dr. Volker's got some other things he wants to talk to you about, but at the end, we're going to talk a little bit about the staffing.
Yeah, and that's it. Really, just a couple others on the dual-credit. As I'd said, district supported initially. I would like to, to offer that, introduce that to students as a pilot. That might not be something we'd be able to do in perpetuity if the program grew and it becomes a part of a regular career and education facility that's, we have it real more peculiar. It might not be wise for that to be the only program in that building that is then funded by the district as a whole. So, I, we would be absolutely clear that that would be a pilot, and that might not continue forever, our, our district being able to do that. The internship, as I've discussed, we, they are, MCC already has a set internship that looks, opportunities that look very good for our students, but I think we would like to continue to expand it as a part of our Kaufman efforts, and looking at our real-world learning, and looking partnerships that might, they might not use an MCC, but also use an arts-oriented community. So, I think that's just something that we could keep, continue to expand, and that would be our goal.
Yeah, right now, the lead instructor talks about being able to place every, every student he's got coming through his program, so, and he's to the point where he doesn't even have to look for places to send students, but obviously, we want to try to see if we can find places close as well, just to make sure.
Isn't this what Sioux Chief does?
It, Sioux Chief, Honeywell, you can name any number of companies.
I mean, do you think...
Learning a lot of, and I think they work mostly in copper and plastics, and this is a little more steel and aluminum, but the skills that these kids are learning are very transferable along those. So, do I think that we could reach out and establish partnerships like that? Yeah, I'd hope to.
Yeah, I mean, just with equipment, they might have old equipment that...
Absolutely.
That would still be viable.
And once you start to build those partnerships where students are being, becoming great productive members of their workforce, businesses are much more likely to approach to you with saying, hey, we're willing to share these, this has been a very, a great partnership for both parties, and for our families and our students. So, we want to absolutely explore this, and we appreciate the opportunity to continue to explore it. That being, it still is in the draft stage. So, staffing, as I said, there is an MCC instructor would be the primary teacher, but we believe that a certified teacher on our side would truly ensure the success of the program. Technically, we wouldn't necessarily have to have that because the MCC, you know, we could use a lab tech, but the MCC instructor being the primary teacher, but I personally believe, and in our discussion, we don't believe that's in the long-term benefit of our program, that we want to, being that that would probably be the only need at halftime. It really works well and fits in with our overall staffing plan. We're talking to Dr. Hapfield and the high school and beyond, because we really do need additional assistance in our growing industrial arts programs. So, looking at being able to hire an FTE, a full-time staff member, that would also do this program and work in our industrial arts program, our project Lead the Way in the engineering side, all our computer-integrated manufacturing, all of our industrial arts programs are growing. So, this just seems like a natural fit to be able to look for an individual that would be able to fill both roles, possibly even coordinate with our robotics program, and build that connection back in to our industrial arts and our computer-integrated manufacturing, and keep that bridge flowing, so.
I would point out as well, right now, our current project Lead the Way teacher is teaching on his planned time, so we can offer one more section, and so we need to resolve that. And we've got, as Dr. Volker mentioned, increased demand. I believe we're adding a course again for next year.
Yeah.
So, the sections are going to easily fill the other half of the day to go with the half a day that would be dedicated to this program. And the nice thing is with, after year one, if it's going the way we hope it goes, if, with a little more FTE, you can make it a, like a morning and afternoon program with the same equipment base.
Double the number of students, yeah.
You can double the capacity fairly quickly if you've got enough students interested. And I think we've talked about it before, too, that if, let's say we decide, based on the equipment and setup, that we can offer up to 10 students in year one, and let's say through the signup process, we only end up with eight. I'm open to, if the board's open to it, offering that to neighboring school districts to fill those last two spots and make it a tuition-based program for them, which is similar to what we do with Lee Summit and Summit Tech and Cass Career. So, we could do that kind of arrangement as well to fill any slots that we don't fill with our own students, but...
You bring up Summit Tech, and I want to say, this sounds great, and I want more. Does MCC offer anything in other areas like IT, medical, nursing, like Summit Tech? I mean...
Let me jump on that one, so...
Don't let me go.
We had, we had this conversation, or some version of it, just, I believe yesterday afternoon with, with Dr. Barr as well. So, the answer is, there are lots of different areas that we would like to explore. To us, this is just kind of the pilot or the starting point of building that relationship. So, if this works as we hope it does and serves a need that we can't already, already serve, I think there are several other programs, and it wouldn't even necessarily have to be an MCC program. We've got some of the trades programs that we don't have, even at Cass Career Center, that we might want to offer here. I wouldn't necessarily recommend offering something that they already have at either Summit Tech or Cass Career. I would look at some of the other areas first that we think are in high demand. We've talked about electrical and HVAC as an example on the trade side. But this is kind of the advanced manufacturing track, which is, long-term, I think, a very high-demand field, high-wage field. So, I, I think it becomes, I don't know if bell cow is the right word, but it's kind of your, your pilot that you really put out there as the starting point of a design that you build on with other programs, like you talk about.
I think this is very exciting. Thank you. As we go forward, I know, in thinking about budget, you know, we're talking about some investments and some capital items subsidized by grants, which is great. But right now, I'm trying to think of like in our five-year plan for capital spending. I don't know that we have a line item for something like this, and if we are going to have emphasis on this, should we designate that in our five-year plan and set aside specific money so we show it as a focus item and have dedicated funds for it?
No, that's very good thinking.
I think it's a good point.
Yeah. And typically, a lot of times with the, the grants, well, let me back up and qualify it just a little bit. So, what the, these, you know, the, the, the lathe, the, just the standard lathe that goes with the lathe class, not the computerized controlled one, and not the CNC one, is still like a $30,000 machine. Well, if you want four of those, now you're $120,000, but we're only going to pay 30 potentially because of the three-to-one money in the grant process. So, we're going to be smart about how we apply for those grant funds, but it could be that we request X from this vocational enhancement grant, and they only approve a portion of it, and we may have to structure the equipment purchases around that a little bit, which could impact the number of kids we can serve. So, I want you to know that this is, we use 10 as a, a goal for this first phase, but there are a lot of moving parts that go with that right now to say for sure what it's going to be. But to your point, that you have to, you know, make some plans if we're going to, if, if this is year one, the program we're going to add, and then hopefully, by year two or year three, we're adding another one, we need to account for that. The challenge will be, this overlaps with our last discussion topic, the challenge will be the space issue.
Yes.
At the secondary level, we're, you know, we're fortunate that we have the academy, but programs like this, we only have one shop at the academy that we can use for a program like this. The next one's going to have to have a different space. And my guess is, thinking forward, regardless of which of those three options we think about for the, the high school level, adding that space will free up space in the system for us to be able to go in and, and add some of these into our buildings and our facilities, so.
That's the exciting part when we're talking about, and I know there's a lot of planning, and it's a lot of, and I was just absolutely kidding with the somber nature of it, there's a lot of important decisions to be made, but those decisions are going to have exciting ramifications for our students, because we're going to be able to add programs such as these and continue to grow their opportunities so that they're ready for the workforce of tomorrow. So, that's exciting when you're looking at it long-term.
Yeah, and if we know that each year, we're going to spend X amount to continue to build our capacity in this area.
One other thought on the staffing, or a couple other thoughts, actually. So, we talked about sharing a space with our robotics program, and it took us several years to get them into that space, and we want, there, there is a natural connection to this program and what they do in robotics, what, what they build and what they use. They use some of the same machining tools, much smaller scale, much smaller size tools than what the industry uses. So, this hopefully will be a natural fit combination with them. In the ideal world, or, it would be nice if it would be somebody would be also interested in the robotics program as the extra-duty program as well, given particularly that they're sharing space, but not, certainly not a necessity. What I will tell you is typically, we wait till the March budget discussion before we ask for FTE. And last year, we did it a little differently. We added some in December that we knew we definitely needed. We came back in February or March, added a few more positions, and then after the budget work session, we added a few more. What I would tell you with this type of expertise, we would like to be able to come to you later this month and ask for authorization for this position, because if we don't have this early, the, the people that are capable of teaching in this area, industrial tech, Project Lead the Way, robotics, advanced manufacturing, are few and far between. So, this is one of those requests where we'd hopefully bring to you at the next meeting and get started on it. There is a scenario where it'd be, if, we may not even find somebody that's qualified, which could delay us for a year. But my hope is, if we start in January, we'd have a much better chance of finding somebody who can work in this field, if that makes sense.
Any other questions or comments? All right, moving on to the district scorecard and peer comparisons. Dr. Montes.
All right. So, this is kind of just an update of where we're at in the overall process, and I left a hard copy at your place because up until right before the meeting, I had forgotten to include on the backside of this document and what we had posted online where the scoring information comes from. So, it's not that we want to go through all that detail, but I just kind of wanted to do this as a final review of you, if you will, of our 2019 scorecard. So, just a little context there, we approved our strategic plan back in December of '17, and then during 2018, we worked on establishing some goals and set some benchmarks on things we wanted to measure related to progress in that area. So, you see on the left-hand side, we have success-ready students, high-quality staff, and financial responsibility. Those are all tied directly to our strategic plan, and then there are five more measures at the bottom that really are just overall stakeholder measures. Won't necessarily go into all the numbers and the detail, but I would just want to highlight a few things. We shared, drafted this with you back in June, because at that point in time, all we had for the 18-19 school year, which was last school year, was our survey results. Well, since then, all of our assessment informations come in, and then December 1st, Desi posted the, all the district scorecards, or not scorecards, but district report cards. And that's not the APR, it's, it's just a report card of a lot of district information, including financial information. So, that's where some of this data comes from as well. So, it's literally December before we get the full complement of data from the prior year. So, just kind of looking down there, the top part of it talks about our MAP performances, which we've already reported to you previously, our ACT, our overall ACT average is at 21.4, and we're still testing about 83% of our students. This is, again, the first class that didn't have the advantage of the state ACT for everyone test. Now, we still offer it, and you pay for it for the students that want to take that. So, we're glad that our participation rate has remained above 80%, and our overall average is still very strong at 21.4.
Is that where it plays into also those, some students may take the ASVAB?
Correct.
Or some of those other tests?
Right.
Work, yes.
We give them, we give them the option to take what's best suited for them, but we're obviously still having a large percentage take the ACT. And it, it's not just at the time of, that we offer that test, because some students may take the ASVAB when we offer one, but then later take the ACT or vice versa, so. So, that information is there. You know, we've got some pretty lofty goals, so the seven column is the, the overall goal. So, in the ideal world, if we were meeting goal on everything, we'd have a seven, 7-0 Just kind of working down, there's some survey results. There, there were some nice increases, and I think we haven't had a chance to talk about that, but the student survey that we do, it talks about whether or not we're providing academic support, social-emotional supports, or giving them real-world learning opportunities, shown a significant increase on all three of those measures. And if you think about the programs we've added and the positions we've added the last couple of years, I think the students have noticed that.
Like on number 12, for example, really proud, that's a pretty significant on the social-emotional supports, so.
So, after having one year of data, we might have set our goal a little too low because now we're already getting up close to our goal areas in those, but that's, that's a good thing. That's something to be proud of. Fairly stable on the staff retention. Some of the data we're going to talk about, we need to keep in mind that this is last year's data, which was kind of the phase-one of Prop RP and what we, what we invested there. You know, we've got the PD goals, one of those, this, there's some fluctuation. You'll see some that went up, some that went down. So, we just kind of have to look at the long-term view. And as we talked about at the last meeting, some of these survey-related questions, we may need to revisit, because if we go to this more often every two weeks, staff perception surveys, for example.
Yeah.
It might change how we measure things. So, as, I think it was Kim brought up that question the last time, we need to, we'll be thinking about that as we roll into the next cycle of this.
I think it'll be very interesting to see how it'll impact our scorecard process.
Healthy fund balances, the financial responsibility measures overall are pretty, pretty positive. The benchmarking one, we're going to talk a little bit about, but, you know, that, what that does is look at a variety of measures against our, for example, 20 metro districts that we use for comparison purposes back in Prop RP. And our goal is to try to get it on average to the 70th percentile on those measures across those districts, and we're at 57th, and I think we're going to be in a position to make some significant growth there. Of course, we always want to ask about communication, school safety, things of that sort, and again, most of those measures have been fairly strong and remain fairly strong. So last year's dataset on these measures, if we just use as our baseline, is down at the bottom right-hand corner, 3.87 compared to where we're at after basically one year of implementing our strategic plan, we've gained almost a half a point. So ideal world, we gain about a point a year, and we'd be on a 7-0 average at the end of five year, four or five years. So we've got room for growth, but we've set pretty aspirational goals in that regard. So that's a quick overview, what kind of questions can I answer before we jump to some peer comparisons? I know there's a lot of small print and data buried into that, so. All right, I think it might be worth then looking at our, at least our Kansas City Metro peer groups, and again, there's a ton of data here, not going to really focus a ton on all of it, but I wanted to give you a sense of it. I've reported, we've reported to you in the past that on ELA and math, we saw a nice increase in math, because we were actually below average last year on this measure. So the way it works on this table is that, say, in ELA, first column, there are 20 measures, not counting the state, we are basically the eighth highest, and so these are ranked order backwards so that we can do the percentile ranking. So you want to be above 10, basically, to be in the top half. 10 and 11 is the middle of the group, if you will. So anything above 10, we're in the top half. So you'll see, like our ACT percentage, we're way up there. That's why a lot of school districts backed off on having kids take the ACT when the state didn't pay for it. They, I don't know if they discouraged it, or what that case might be, so we saw a lot of school districts drop in that area.
And are you looking at the rank? Is that what we're looking?
Yeah, the rank at the bottom is the number, 20 is the highest, which is the best or the strongest, and one would be the lowest in that scenario. So they're kind of reverse order ranked, if you will. Graduation percentage is an area of growth that we need to focus on, and I know Dr. Volker, Dr. Barr, and Mr. Miller have been having lots of conversations about that. It's not that ours is, you know, bad, it's not great, though. Room for growth there, and there's no doubt about that. One of the big jumps this year was our attendance percentage. A number of students who made 90% attendance was statewide very high, and was one of the highest in the metro, so that's good. One I thought you might want to talk a little bit about is the average teacher salary. Again, I would remind you that we only had one year, one-year phase-in, if you will, of the Prop RP funds. We made a pretty significant investment in year one, it did allow us to pass one district and close the gap on several. My best guess right now would be, given how close we are to a couple, and I'll use Belton as the example, you know, we're literally less than $100 on average behind them last year. So when we get this year's data, which again, won't come till next December, or this coming December, I think we'll pass them and maybe one or two other districts for sure. So we are, there's just such a time lag on seeing where that plays out. The other thing I'll mention about average teacher salary, it's affected by the next two measures that follow after it. Average teacher experience, if that goes up, your average salary tends to go up. And we're kind of middle of the pack in that regard. So that's where that retention number is important, because if you're retaining a lot of folks, they're also tending, they're moving on the salary schedule and helping with the average there. And then also, the teachers with advanced degrees. We're just middle of the pack on those two measures. And both of those, the more they go up through retention, and people working towards advanced degrees because, because the, both the financial rewards there and the expertise incentive is there as well, that helps your overall salary at the same time. So I'm fully expecting that comparability to go up. Now, obviously, there are districts that still have significantly higher operating levies and/or tax bases than we do, that I don't expect us to go to the top of the chart, but we want to be in the top half. I mean, we got to, that's where we need to keep working towards, and we'll see how soon we can get there. Expenditure per pupil, though, and overall tax levy, we're still in those bottom, kind of in the bottom five districts of those 20 in the metro in that regard. So that is a limiting factor, but it's obviously better now than it was when we were at the bottom, the very bottom. Any questions, in particular observations you'd like to hear on that? Won't really spend any time on the statewide one, which is the other chart that's provided, but it's another grouping of 20 districts across the state, a few of which were in the first group, but trying to take a more statewide view and looking at districts that were similar to us. Again, these are more closely paired to us in terms of social and economic diversity and things of that sort, so you would expect to be somewhere in the middle here. So anytime you're above 50%, you're doing better than what the typical would be. Maybe not as informative as looking at our immediate neighbors, but another comparison point that we've looked at.
Is this a chart that we put together, or that's?
Yes. No, we, all the data comes from Desi, but we've compiled it.
Maybe it's just me, I don't know. I get confused by the ranking. Is there a reason we don't just say we're first, second, third, as opposed to we're 12th, but that's backwards?
It does feel backwards.
The simple reason is this, the end goal on the scorecard is a percentile rank, and the percentile rank, you're kind of working in the other direction.
But could we publish it so that the common folk can understand it like me?
Yes.
But then do the calculations in a hidden cell?
Yes, yes, we can.
We still kind of, we do the same thing, kind of like, okay, where are we again?
Because I'm looking expense per pupil, and I don't understand that one.
Those three at the end.
The last three are the way you want them.
The last three are.
Well, yeah, and so they're different, like some are different.
Yes, that's why you got the last one.
But the problem is, if I flip, I guess, yeah.
This is a mathematician.
So if I flip 17, and I don't flip the other three, it is.
Yes, exactly what's going on, I promise.
I think I'm going to have to flip them all, though, to make it work very well.
Well, you just put that in a hidden formula.
All right, point taken.
Oh, that's great.
It works for my mind, but I know, I realize it doesn't, it doesn't necessarily make a lot of sense.
That's great.
I do understand what you're doing.
Yeah.
All right, any other thoughts, comments, questions about any of our agenda tonight?
Thanks for all the good information. It was a lot of good information.
Anything else? All right, meeting adjourned.
Thank you, everyone.